I guess we're starting with six. I've asked Priscilla to lead us in a pledge of allegiance, so we'll go ahead and start with that.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I salute the flag, the state of Mexico, the citizens simple, without oppression, and no other power.
Thank you. Joan, can you do our roll call for us, please?
Charles Wong. Chris Mortensen.
Here.
Michael Shaw. Priscilla Manuelito.
President.
Kevin Mitchell.
Here.
I forgot to welcome everybody out today to our school board meeting. We'll try to keep this brief this evening. And I want to make sure and encourage everybody to, if you have public comment, to get your forms in so that we can hear what you have to say. And make sure and encourage everybody to enjoy some birthday enchiladas, and birthday vegetables, and birthday koolaid while we do it. Let's go, uh... Do I have a motion to approve the agenda? Okay, Joan.
Mr. Mitchell?
Yes.
Ms. Manuelito?
Yes.
Mr. Shaw?
Yes.
Mr. Mortensen?
Yes.
We'll go right into the recognition portion of our agenda here. And I'll turn the time over to Javanna.
We are going to recognize the schools and the principals that achieved growth on the New Mexico Public Education Report Card. And I want to tell you that tonight we have the best of the best within our district here, the site principals. And we once again have to give credit to the principals, the teachers, the students and their parents for the growth at the schools. So first up is Charmin Munoz from Red Rock Elementary. Next we have Lanny Ray from Reima High School. Brian Staples from Segai High School. Stop and take a picture. Mary Ann Sherman from Navajo Pine High. Mary Ann Sherman from Navajo Middle School. Carrie Labalto of Gallup Middle School. So the next individual will get two awards because Del Norte was two schools last year, Sofia Wad, Deon Yate Elementary, and Washington, Kristen Bijan. Jessica Landa Balzogian from Jefferson Elementary. She hasn't done it yet. Oscar Altiveros from Reima Elementary. Mary Washburn from Lincoln Elementary. We're gonna do one with Charmin real quick with Mike.
I'm doing my own, I'm sorry. Thank you.
And if we can bring everyone back up that got it received, where do you want it, Javanna? In front of the board? Be great. Just in front of the board. And I just want to close with, once again, we want to thank the parents and the students of the communities. And just from the district level principals, we know that we are blessed to have you in our schools. And we know that you're making a positive difference every day for students. I mean, thank you for that very much, appreciate it.
Principals, I just want to say thank you so much. I know it's expressed with the certificate and with the award here, but you guys give so much more, and we're just very thankful. We are very blessed. I see that's a wonderful word to use this evening for you principals that are here. We're very blessed to have you. And I know our children are very blessed to have you. And we thank you for everything you do, the hours you put in, the time, your dedication, even the love that you give to our children. We just thank you so much, and we're very proud of you as a mom, as a parent, and as a board member. Thank you very much for all you do for us.
Appreciate that, Priscilla. I also want to echo her comments. My family has benefited from these great principals. And we really appreciate their hard work and extra time and effort. They absolutely kill it. I wanted to, uh... Before we move on, I wanted to recognize our state senator, George Munoz here. He snuck in, he's sitting in the background. Say hi to him. Shake his hand. Bring up anything you wanted to introduce something to say. We appreciate it. Um, let's go ahead and move on to the next portion of our agenda, the approval of the minutes. Do I have a motion?
I motion that we approve the minutes.
Joan, can you do your roll call?
Mr. Mitchell?
Yes.
Ms. Manuelito?
Yes.
Mr. Shaw?
Yes.
Mr. Mortensen?
Yes.
Great, let's move on to the consent agenda items. Item 4A, 4B, 4C, 4D, and 4E. I have one quick question about 4C. I was wondering if Mr. Hyatt could just kind of explain what that is.
Vice President Mortensen, members of the board. This particular item on 4C has to do with waivers for alternate demonstrations of competency. We do this throughout the year when students need a waiver in order to graduate and they have to do some other requirements to fulfill the requirements that are, because they're already past the part or something. And so that's what these are. So you see these periodically throughout the year. Typically, they come to the board late in the spring before graduation. During the spring semester.
So this ID number might represent a individual student.
Correct.
Okay, great. Let's keep that confidential. Do we...
I just wanted to comment on 4D and D. Um, you know, those are wonderful programs, partnerships that we have within our our district with Gallup Teen School, Base Health Center, and also with RMCA. So I think that, you know, those are great programs that we have for our children within the school.
Thank you, Ms. Manuelito. Do we have a motion, Bill?
With that, a motion.
We've had a motion. Joan, can you do your roll call for us?
Mr. Mitchell?
Yes.
Ms. Manuelito?
Yes.
Mr. Shaw?
Yes.
Mr. Mortensen?
Yes.
Great, we're moving right along here. We'll start with our, I guess we're moving to our study circle portion, a public comment. Looks like we have two people. We'll start in the order that they were submitted. Mr. Larry Foster is first on our agenda for public comment. Turn the time over to him.
Good evening. All the teachers that got awarded, that's well deserved. So my small issue here, my agenda, my wife, Ms. Dana, Mrs. Foster, were grandparents of our students that go to Navajo. In Gallup. But we had our parent-teacher conference yesterday, we attended that. We have a granddaughter that's, uh... That's, uh... With low grades at this point. I think we need to resolve some of these issues that our students are having. In one of the classrooms, it's a wood, modern wooden working class. You see a lot of young ladies, for some reason, that were put in there in that class. For our, as grandparents, we didn't specifically agree to that because she's an artist, she likes to draw. And we were wondering why they put her in that class. But right now, she's, it's difficult for her. The instructor, the teacher, interaction with him. He stayed, our concern is, why isn't there a textbook? I got this textbook that I borrowed from Fort Wickley High School. And Gallup, McKinley County Schools is... What I hear about the schools is, uh... They're trying to improve. And we had a Secretary of Education come down here last spring, talking that way. Now, results is a little bit different. When you get down into the grade level, into the classrooms. And I think a lot of the teachers, you did outstanding work, but a lot of your decisions are not in what you do. You know, the administration from the top, they don't really acknowledge some of that. This is a prime example of that. What they do is they give out these handouts. I mean, I was, I was in school back in the 60s. We didn't have that. We were, we were advanced. We had textbooks. Now, we met with the teacher. We wanted a glossary so our child can learn. And I had to go online to get my glossary for her. It has all the tools in here, the names on there. And I don't think I need to do that. I'm not the teacher in the classroom. So we asked the teacher, why don't you put it nicely on the board? Put your tools up there and name them so you can have the students write them. He disagreed with us. So be it. That's education. Well, she doesn't keep up, she doesn't have, she doesn't take notes. She doesn't, she's a slow learner. You know, those are the comments. Okay, well... The other class, it's a math class. Our grandchild says, "The teachers talk too fast." Yes, of course they talk fast. They've been talking English since the 1500s, 1600s, 1700s. This is new to our people. We just began to speak English less than 500 years. Now how does a teacher expect us to? Our case to learn at a quick snap of a finger. Again, they use handouts. Why? I don't know. We asked the teacher, why do you use handouts? There's no textbooks. So those are my issues. You might not agree with me like this, but I'm bringing it here on the floor. And I want this written down for, on the record. I have a recommendation with this, though. I'm not just gonna throw it out there and leave it there. I think we should, as native Navajo students, I think we should get some of that Indian education money and let's put some tutors in there. After school, noon time. That's what I'm recommending on, some of the Indian education money. So, yeah, we use that for other purposes, but this is specifically in the classroom, hands-on. So that's the recommendation I want to go with. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Foster. Uh, our next public comment will be from, uh, may I call you Sunshine? Sunshine Jimar.
Yaakne. Welcome, school board members, superintendent, and staff to my home community. Shee Aya Samwatsa, Jimar, and Nishya. And everyone also knows me by the name of Sunshine. Sanabik Munshna, Ashadine, Ashischi, Ashadine, Dashinado, Ashin, Dashiche. I isitukagayranasha, Ado Baskahe, Dieykon Keoshte. I am a proud mother of Twin Lakes Elementary students. And I'm also a proud graduate of Twin Lakes Elementary. Although I graduated from the old elementary school, and this is the new rebuilt school. I'm welcome, all of you. Thank you, thank you, thank you for bringing a school board meeting out to our communities. We've been wanting this and requesting for this in all of our rural county schools for our school board members to please meet us in the communities where our students are attending. So not only can you see our schools, meet the staff, but also see our roads, see our rural area, and see some of the faces of the parents and grandparents of our communities. So thank you for coming out to our community. And I really would like to encourage these school board members to continue to go out to the county schools, not just stay at the comfortable boardroom in Gallup. I know you have a lot of amenities there. I appreciate the live video stream. But I think it's important to come out to our schools so our people, our parents, know who you are, and you know us. I want to encourage that you do take the meeting out to Saru High School, which is on your agenda. I think you're gonna hear some fantastic news from that community. And I just heard that Adam Beach was also out there in attendance for one of the football games. So please, continue to make that a priority as school board members. The second thing I'd like to speak to you about this evening is transportation. I know it's also on your agenda. And one, I want to thank, um, the school board members from the last term, Priscilla Manuelito and Kevin Mitchell, for advocating for Johnson Road and helping us to get improvements on that. And also Superintendent Hyatt, thank you for advocating for Johnson Road and getting improvements there as well. We were supposed to have that road started in July. It didn't get started until September, but it's not too bad, right? After 30 years of working on this. So Johnson Road is a very, um... Issue, an important issue that I've been bringing to school board members for the last, I don't know how many years. Um, it has to do with the bus transportation. And making improvements on that road is a really good help bring up our enrollment from students who left our school district to get on buses that would go down Johnson Road. And it's also gonna help our parents get to more meetings and activities here at the school. So my concern or question for the school board and transportation director is the bus situation related to not only Johnson Road, but other roads. So we still have this problem of school buses not being able to cross over bridges. That still continues to be the problem and the issue. I know our state legislature is aware of this. And we are trying to get suburbanous or small buses to cross those bridges so that parents are not having to drive to the bridges to drop off their kids and pick up their kids. Um, so that continues to be a problem. It hasn't been addressed in terms of resolving that suburban, small bus situation. I know, um, one of the comments was that there are not enough bus drivers or not enough suburban drivers. So however we can help you all as community members, whether we have to lobby the state legislature or help recruit drivers to hire, please let us know, but that really needs to be an issue that we need to address so at least we can have parents not having to do that every day. The last thing I wanted to share is, um... There is a bill that's going before the state legislature. And it is related to making sure students in all the public schools are served hot meals. And many of you know I am an advocate for food and nutrition. And I've been talking to, before school board meetings, to try to get better nutrition and healthier foods in our cafeterias. But I really would like to ask the school board members and Superintendent Hyatt to look into this bill that's going to the state legislature on helping to get hot food served at all of our schools. Right now, I can tell you that my children, there's three of them in the school district right now, are like 50/50 on the breakfast and lunch meals that are served. And a lot of the, um, foods they do not like are the cold-serve, ready-to-heat meals that are being served in the cafeterias. They really do like the hot meals. So I would like to ask school board members to see if we can do something about that. And I'd like to help as I, um, shared our request to meet with the Food Service Department and see if I could help in that area. So in conclusion, we are having our first farmer's market in the community of Twin Lakes. So Friday, here in Twin Lakes, we're having our first ever farmer's market. And I'm very proud of this. We have been working on getting local gardeners and local farmers, as well as herbalists, traditional food people, to come and sell their produce and to help us encourage self-sustainability and getting back to learning about our traditional foods. So if you're all free, join us Friday at 3 o'clock here in the community of Twin Lakes for our first ever farmer's market. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Martin. I appreciate all the public comments that we've had today. I mean, I think that that is one of the things that the school board meetings are about is hearing from the public and, uh, being able to address many of their concerns. Many of the folks don't see it as, as you're commenting and things like that. Mike Hyatt and the board members take notes and follow up on these things as we go and, you know, see what we can do to respond to the comments that people have. Let's go ahead and move into the report section of our, of our agenda. Starting with the schedule report by Lali Gonzalez.
Vice President Mortensen, members of the board. I invited Ms. Gonzalez to the report regarding our positive behavior systems that we're putting in place in the district. We've heard recently from Snapside and other organizations and how we work to do a better job at behavior management in the school system. But our goal is to reduce the dropout rate in schools and also to provide a better behavior management system where it's proactive rather than being reactive and too black and white. And so she's gonna talk a little bit about this and what they're doing through the special education department. And I think in the future, I'd also like to have Mr. Chavis come in and talk about some of the things we're doing as a district to reduce expulsions and those types of things and to keep kids in school and make sure that they're in school so they can learn and be focused on their education in a positive way.
Good evening. My name is Ilalia Gonzalez, I'm the director of special education. Also take care of school nursing. In the spring, in talking with Mr. Hyatt and the leaders of our district, we identified a need to look at school-wide positive behavior support interventions. And because I have a team of people in special education that specialize and that have a wealth of knowledge in this area, we volunteered to be part of the implementation team for the district-wide initiative. So part of what I'm talking about is advocating for similar expectations, acknowledging positive, um, students that exhibit positive behavior, make good decisions, make good choices. Also looking at collecting data that informs our practice. So not only do we do that for individual students with disabilities, but we also need to do that for every kid that's in our school. So it's kind of a tier-three, the tier-one implementation at this point. I do want to just give you some VATS on school-wide, PBIS is what we call it. It's a framework that's endorsed by the, um, Education Department in the US. There is, uh, it's a proactive approach that relies on research, evidence-based practices. This includes developing clear behavioral expectations, teaching these expectations, acknowledging when a student is doing or demonstrating appropriate behavior, having a consistent approach to correct or redirect inappropriate behavior, and then also, again, looking at data systematically to solve problems. So in general, the elementary schools, we reached out to principals in the spring. And we did training for all elementary, district elementary schools and their implementation teams for PBIS in June, when we had to make up some snow days. So that was a really great use of our snow days. Our coordinators have been reaching out to high school and middle school principals since July to schedule training for implementation teams for our secondary schools. And by the end of next week, we should have made it to every secondary school. And they should have received the training that's available. And looking at how does each individual school look at expectations? How do we, as educators, look at being proactive? How do we teach appropriate behavior? Because a lot of our students need that direct instruction. And we always want to make sure that our learning environments are... And we always want to make sure that our learning environments are cognizant of social, emotional development as well as academic development. So in the research that is available, and I did include some websites for our board members to be able to look at some of the research that's been gathered, the framework for school-wide PBIS, and also some of the data for schools that have implemented this framework across the nation. But really what we see is that schools across the country that have implemented this have experienced reductions in disruptive behavior, in inappropriate behavior, bullying, fighting, classroom disruptions. And because of that, they also experience academic achievement. My friend, Dr. Lovato here, a great component of PBIS. And we partner together with her while we work together at Gallup Middle School to make sure we were studying the data. Why were students being referred to the office? What are some things that we can do to be more proactive and to help kids be successful? And just kind of problem solve those in grade-level teams as well as supporting the kids that have disabilities who need more support. So in a nutshell, I just covered these two handouts, three handouts, quickly. I wondered if anyone had any questions?
I have a quick question. Thank you, actually, for your comment. And just so the other fellow board members know, if I don't see you, just yell it and I'll hand down the microphone if you have any questions or if you want to show the microphone. In, kind of in general terms, how does this work in practice? Like, let's say at Gallup Middle School, you have a kid that is like, I mean, I don't know. I mean, is it mainly only aimed at special education students? Or is it for everybody? And what types of problems would you look to address? And how, I mean, how does that kind of ecosystem work?
So it's really a school-wide framework for studying behavior and for developing school-wide expectations. So not only for the student who's a general education student, all the way to a student who's what we call a tier-three student, a special education student. If we're all speaking the same language and we all have taught these expectations and we are seeing it across the school, it makes for a more successful environment, not only for the gen ed kid who's highly achieving, but also for the special education student who understands, who we understand needs consistency, needs structure, right? So it's a school-wide approach. And we use it in special education with our behavior intervention coach and our coordinators. And we look at, if there is a specific extreme behavior or a student is exhibiting that, then we look at the functional assessment of behavior and we look at a behavior intervention plan to support that student to redirect some of that negative behavior. And we place it with more appropriate behaviors.
So, I mean, is it like a conflict, like a conflict resolution type of a tool? Or is it for like kids that maybe are acting out in inappropriate ways?
It's actually for all students. And in the teams, in the implementation teams that principals are a part of, as well as IEP teams, there may be specific strategies that certain students need. And that team is responsible for identifying that and developing that alongside the IEP team.
Great, thank you. Do you have any questions for me, or Kevin? Thank you for your information. My concern would be, do we have special education substitutes? Or if a special education teacher is unavailable or not at the school or on the side, do we just call in, meet something? Or do we have substitutes that are called in for special education?
We generally have substitutes available in the general pool. But we don't generally identify subs as special ed or regular ed. They all are trained and licensed by substitute teachers. If we have students that have specific needs, we try to make sure that we have backup plans for the staff that are actually in the school that are familiar with the student before we call in a substitute that is maybe unfamiliar with a student with more severe or significant needs.
The program that you had, I'm sorry, I forgot the name. The one with the Hilton Garden?
Yes, ma'am.
What was that called?
Project Search.
Project Search. Did you find any additional vendors that could help our children besides just Hilton Garden? Or are they the only ones?
The Project Search model is actually a model that we were selected for and that the University of Mexico and the Public Education Department paid for all the licensing fees and all the training. And their model indicates that you find one business partner that can host your program. And we work collaboratively together. Secondly, your question about other businesses that are interested, absolutely. Every day, we get more and more of our community members in business or in other places within each community willing to help us and looking for our students with disabilities so they can be employed.
And that program is still ongoing?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. So is it every, I'm sorry, is it every so many years that we have to reapply? Or is it an application process? Or is it, we just get it all the time?
Well, we went through the implementation phase. Our next phase is to make sure that we pass an audit by the Project Search organization. And once we do that, then they extend the licensing fees to Gallup McKinley County Schools. They say, well, you've done this with fidelity. You've met all the program requirements. You've been successful. Now we give you the authority to replicate the model. So that's what we're hoping to work on.
One more question right away. I really, really appreciated the parent training that you provided for the special needs children. Are you going to continue that this coming school year?
Yes, ma'am. And we are doing, actually, we're launching an IDP Parent Academy. It will begin next Wednesday on the twenty-seventh. And we have committed ourselves to having those parent trainings on a monthly basis this school year instead of a quarterly basis. And then secondly, we also implemented, myself and coordinators, in scheduling community outreach times during the school year. So for example, next week, I think we're scheduled to be out in Ramon. We'll do a little bit of an informational session on special education and gift it in our ancillary services. We're there to listen to parents if we have feedback, whether it's positive or where we need to improve. And we're scheduled to do that in every community. So Ramon, Peru, Brown Point, Tohachi, Abahou. And then, of course, we'll do several sessions in the Gallup area.
Thank you. I mentioned, we're scheduled to get that.
Yes, ma'am. Yes, we will. I will send that out. And I'll also send it to Joan, I guess, if you could share it, and Javana.
Thank you. Yeah, I think that's probably the best mechanism to get it out. I appreciate your time.
No problem. Thank you.
And Kevin, one of the things that I learned, I have a son. My son is in special ed over at Gallup Middle School. But the class they have, it's actually called Life Skills. And they teach basically exactly what it sounds like. But there's three or four staff members in there. So, you know, if one person is absent or, you know, there's enough people to pick up a slide, it isn't usually just like one teacher for the whole class. And I don't know if it's like that at district-wide, but at least at Gallup Middle School, it's like that. I know it seems like there's always added coverage and they do an excellent job. Let's go ahead and move on to the next item if we don't have any objections. The next item on our agenda is the transportation report by Jeff Bond.
Vice President, Board members of the Board. I also want to say a couple of things regarding transportation before Mr. Bond his presentation. Recently, I've received a few comments concerning allegations that have been made against the Transportation Department for Gallup McKinley County Schools. And I want to make a couple of quick comments on two items. Number one, the district continually works to ensure that we are using funds and time effectively and efficiently in our Transportation Department. And sometimes that means we have to change bus routes for people. And that's just part of the process. As employees of any institution, whether public or private, jobs change at times to fit the needs of students in our case. And that's what we continually try to do. In addition, we never condone or will allow a person who decides to read and drive a school bus or be a distracted driver to continue to drive a school bus. And so I want to make sure that's very clear. So people that feel they have been mistreated potentially and they have been driving on a school bus, that's probably why they may not be driving a school bus anymore because it's against the law. It's also against the rules regarding their licensure. And it's unsafe for students to drive a bus while being distracted, whether that's reading a bus route, reading a text message, or talking to somebody while they're driving down the road, with students or without students on any of our roads in our community. So I want to make sure that was very clear for the community tonight. Mr. Bond?
Ah, thank you, school board members, audience. Mr. Hyatt asked me to do a report for transportation. Basically, transportation, this year, we received five million, nine hundred and ten thousand dollars and ten bucks, yes. But hopefully, we won't be like last year and they'll wait till January, decide to cut us another million or something from there. So far, we're good. We're running on that budget. We have intensified our training this year for bus drivers. And one of the reasons we've done that is last year, we had an incident on Johnson's Road out here where we had somebody that felt like he had to get on a bus and arm himself and hurt as many people as he could. Fortunately, he wasn't able to accomplish that task. So we have increased, stepped up our training for bus drivers, being more aware of bus stops. We've actually got the security company that contracts with the district. They've come in and helped us do some training like that to be aware of bus stops, look for stranger dangers, even for drivers and students. So that's one of our things on the agenda. The other thing is, I heard Suburbans were brought up. Now, the law was passed that we could use Suburbans to transport. It's not a matter of giving enough drivers this time. The state has refused to let us use the Suburbans until they put together state regulations regarding how, where, when, or how those Suburbans need be marked, how we can use them, when we can use them. So even though the law passed, it says we can use Suburbans to transport students to and from school, we still have to wait on the State Transportation Bureau to give us the directions of how we're going to do that. They have been in contact with them about three times. Antonio Ortiz is our director's name up there. He has indicated it'll probably sometime after the first of the year. So.
So Mr. Bond, you can't, I just want to make sure I'm clear on that. So you can't just go buy Suburbans, start driving kids around?
Yes, sir. That's correct. We can't.
What in general terms has to be done, modifications to the Suburbans before they're legal for us to use?
We don't have that yet. That's what the State Transportation Bureau has yet. And that's what they're trying to figure out. Because technically, right now, the safest way to get you to school is in a school bus. Everybody watches out for a school bus. We don't know if we're going to have to paint them yellow, like a school bus, and put school transportation on them. We're not sure. And that's one of the things we're working out. And they haven't, I mean, of course, Santa Fe is shorthanded. But that's one of the things they haven't got worked out yet. And until they do, they will not allow us to use them. So at this time, the only thing we use Suburbans for is like activity trips for athletes. If we're taking the golf team or something, then we can use them for to and from school, not yet. Yes, ma'am.
Mike knows that I've been really questioning this a lot. And I've been asking him almost monthly how far we are on this. And I think, I know, I know Santa Fe, like you said, may be shorthanded. But it's our kids that are really paying the price at this time for this. And I don't know if, if you could help us, tell us how to help you to push this? If it's a letter that we can write? If it's phone calls we need to make? If it's parents that need to make phone calls? What can we do? We even have, next month, on August eighteenth, we have seven districts that are going to be rural districts that are in our area. Zuni and CCSD is one of them that will be coming together. I mean, I could mention it there as a region president. If we could start pushing this department to give us some indication of what we need to do to start this process. Because it's our kids. I mean, they're the ones that are still walking or still, the winter's coming and, you know, the muds are coming. I mean, those are all concerns that I know does not bother people sometimes in Santa Fe that have wonderful paved roads, that have sidewalks, that don't even walk at all, that are miles down. Our kids are walking from, you know, over a mile, two miles, three miles to get home. And I think that's one thing that we need to continue to stress to our legislators, to Santa Fe, to Transportation Department up there. But I think we need to, if we can help you, sir, in some way, please let us know. And we can also ask our parents to help and community members, our chapters, to help if we can do it that way, too. Thank you.
Thank you. Let's maybe go up. Technically, you're right. I mean, we, I, they don't even answer my calls no more in Santa Fe because I've been bugging them about this. So whatever you guys could do would be great. And I, you know, write your legislators. We've talked to the Indian Act community from up there that is on that, is the legislators. And they're in support of this, too. It's just, you know, the wheels turn slowly. So in the meantime, what we have done, as I've met with Superintendent Hyatt, who's been really supportive, instead of going to Suburbans, we have actually, the district has put up money to purchase four smaller buses out of district funds, not state funds, which is usually where we get our buses. Those buses we're going to use in some of the high priority areas. And I've actually worked with Summit, who's the international bus company, the builders. We have come up with a bus that we can get the most kids on and stay under the twenty-thousand-pound tonne load for the ten-ton bridges. And we have four of those. One of them is going to be here next week. The other three should be here in, end of October, first of November. Those buses, we want to put one down here in the Johnson Road, Tolacay area. We already have a small bus there, but it's too small. It can't pick up everybody as needed. We're going to put one out on Blue Madison Road, which is south of Gallup, which we have about three or four bridges we have to cross down there and make the loop through Bred Springs, come out down there on the Bred Springs Road back to the Most State. And then in Pinedale area, we'd like to put a couple up there to run through Lobo Valley Road and Maple Trail Road. Those are our priority areas. And then in Tauru, we've identified the bridge there. A Suburban would be fine. We have like four kids there that we need to service. So we've worked and figured out our priorities. So at this time, the small buses will be coming. The other thing we're going to have to do is hire more drivers. And anytime we put a bus on route, we have to get permission from the, if it's a state, the state's ponying up the money for the bus. And we have to get permission from the State Transportation. Since the district bought these buses, we will have to hire more drivers. We're in the process of training drivers now. We've pretty well got all the drivers trained that we need until these new buses come in. We're still about seven short district-wide, which is the first since I've been here for five years.
How many tolls do we have?
Seven right now.
How many tolls do we have?
We need, we have one hundred and eighteen routes. We're down about seven drivers. We have about one hundred and eleven. But we use our mechanics and subs to fill in. And if we add these additional four, so we'll need about one hundred and twenty-two drivers overall in route. And we're almost there. We've got about ten drivers in the works to get their license. Not all of them will pass, but we've had good luck with our trainers. They've been doing a really good job lately. So we've had, we're getting our drivers coming on. Other than that, we're, I said, our priority is student safety always. One of the issues about, anytime the Transportation Department breaks a regulation, like crossing a bridge that's not rated for us, we stand, we put ourselves in jeopardy of losing all of our transportation funding for the year. In other words, that five million dollars the state gives us to take kids to and from school, anytime we violate a regulation and they can actually take our money from us. I know two years ago, we were told by the former superintendent to go to Machu Picchu and pick up students, which is against state law. The state, the first letter I got was, "If you continue, you will lose your transportation funding." So that's why we don't cross the bridges. That's why we don't go through washes with buses. Because student safety is a priority for the state as well as us. And those are the reasons we don't do that. We don't want to jeopardize our funding.
Any more questions? What are some of the qualifications for these, you know, these open jobs, the bus drivers that we have? And how many hours? Can you tell us a little bit about the jobs? If, you know, if we know people or whatever that are out, you know, looking for work?
To be a bus driver, you have to be able to pass the CDL qualifications, which is Class B. It's not like a semi. It's in between them, right? Are you have a Class D license and a Class A CDL? It's called a Class B NS with the weight limit because they can go up to about 40,000 pounds. And the buses are actually rated about 35,000. That's what that is. The thing you have to do is you have to be able to pass the exams at the DMV. You cannot have more than one DWI within the last five years. If you have two ever in your life, that automatically disqualifies you, like state law. You have to be able to go through 36 hours of training with us. And then, if you pass the four exams at the DMV, which are on paper, then you go through our 36 hours of training. You have to get a first aid, and it can't be online. Your first aid has to be from a reputable source. They have to give you a card that has the stamp like D, or else it's the National Safety Institute, Red Cross Works, the fire department, any place like that. It just can't be one of those online ones that they get. Then you have to pass the bus driving exam. That's where you actually drive the bus. And you have to go through all the maneuvers that you're trained in part of that 36 hours of training. It usually takes people about 50 or 60 hours of training with us before you're ready to pass. That's just, the 36 hours is the minimum. And that's including your drive time on the bus. The kicker to that is, if you don't pass the four exams at the DMV, and then, this is the big one that they just threw on us last year, pass a physical and a drug test, they won't let you even practice for the exam. We can't teach you how to practice you on the exam. And the DOT physical is 100 bucks. And that's kind of a holdup for a lot of people. We've actually had some of our people in our department, we've actually lent people the money to go get their physical so we can get them moving and then tell them to pay us back as you can. Because we need drivers. We're trying to help them out. And we understand people and hardship and everything outside. So that's basically what you need. And if they're willing and want to drive, we can use them. Most drivers drive morning and afternoon. And then when some, after school starts, they'll all pick up extra time driving off school programs. And then a lot of them drive field trips in the middle of the day or on weekends. And they make extra money. And that's basically our transportation. So we even, if you think about the kids and just put it in perspective, we have the buses leave at 5:30 in the morning. My last bus comes home after after school at 8 o'clock at night. Some of my activity buses get home at 4:30. Last week, I was at Thiru Minute or Thiru Bus Barn. We thought a five-year-old was gone. He was on the bus. So I was there at 7:45 just to get an exam. We didn't have a kid to go to exam with.
How many hours do you think, you know, most of the bus drivers get in a week?
Most of them get about 25 to 30 hours a week, unless they're doing the after-school program, then most of them get close to 40. And the reason they don't get 40 is because they only do the after-school program three days a week and usually two hours, two extra hours.
What's the pay range from all the way from like a beginner, you know, starting up to?
We can thank Mr. Hyatt again this year for helping us out there. Everybody got a 10% pay raise, all the bus drivers. A couple of years ago, we were able to get the pay up from nine bucks an hour to 12. That's helped us a lot. And then, the other thing that happened this year, and again, Superintendent was gracious enough that everybody got credit for their years of experience, which helped some of our drivers because they'd driven other places. So our drivers make anywhere from 12 to 19 bucks an hour.
Great. Sounds like decent, decent pay. I'm surprised we can't, you know, they're interested. Do we have any other questions from any of the members?
For all of the bus drivers, are they all able to make the extra money? Or is it just certain bus drivers that get to the season?
No, we, on activities, we have, there's an activity driver for every barn that's dedicated. And they're paid out of a different funding source. We have an activity driver, Tohachi, Thiru, Crown Point. They all have a dedicated driver just for that. And even in Navajo and Sayla have theirs. Those guys trade off as being our mechanic, service guys, plus activity drivers in Sayla and Navajo. Gallup has three activity drivers. Those drivers, they help us up on regular to and from routes because they don't have activity. They're dedicated for the activities like doing athletic trips, field trips. They're the ones that do it first, and then we fill in with our other drivers as needed. And there's plenty of trips, trust me. Last year, from August till November 1st, we had over 1,000 activity trips. So just an idea that we stay busy. And drivers do make pretty good money if they want to work. We have a sign-up sheet. Because a lot of the drivers don't want to work weekends, so they won't. So that's why, Kevin, we have a sign-up sheet and we rotate through. And if you tell us no, then we just go next one.
I have a question on the, I know we're working on different boundaries. We have MLU, we have the Great Month. Are all of them secure now? I know that we're not really, we haven't had any more discussions on state to state due to the PACA funds, but how about all the other boundaries?
Our boundaries, if they're with another district like Cibola, are good. They don't change as long as, as long as the school board don't want to make any changes, those boundaries stay here from year to year. They just have to be presented at, you know, the school board just has to hear about them. And I'll go ahead and let Mr. Hyatt say, Mr. Hyatt, I'm answering.
Mrs. Manuelito, we are still needing to get those updated. There's some changes that we talked about that we wanted. We just got to get together with those districts to get, if they agree with the changes so we can make those about an end date so they can't just be recruited and not any changes.
How about the question they had about the grants?
I would prefer not to talk about that. Mr. Vaughn, I just had, it's just one more, just a curiosity question. How many miles do you think your buses drive, I mean, all total together, of course, in the school?
Can I just answer the to and from and not the activity?
That's fine, yeah.
We travel about 2.5 million miles a year just for to and from services. That's our regular bus route. That doesn't count after school, where we're taking kids home for those programs. It doesn't count our activity trips, where we take kids on field trips or athletics at all. That is what we report to the state. And it doesn't change much. We stay around 2.5 to 2.7 million miles every year.
How many gallons diesel do you think you use?
Gallons a lot. The bus gets between six and eight miles to the gallon. So I'll let you figure it out now. We get about 8,000 gallons in Gallup every 10 days.
Yeah, I mean, you really realistically are managing a trucking company for a few years. Unbelievable.
And that's one of the holdups too on the small buses. We do not have gasoline in our district. So we mandate that they have to be diesel. So that was one of the holdups because you can't get, they don't make buses of certain sizes if they're not diesel. So, any other questions?
Thank you, Ms. Vaughn.
Thank you.
Appreciate it. We'll go ahead and move on to the next section of our, portion of our board meeting is the board reports. I, in just keeping the meeting short and sweet, I will abstain from any reports that I have.
The only thing I have to report is making school dedication and some, well, groundbreaking and celebration we had on our intended lesson.
I did that last time and I got in trouble, so I'm giving my board report. The whole lesson, just hold on here. I'm not doing that again. I attended the federal program public hearing in Crown Point. The ladies, the ladies and gentlemen did an excellent job in Crown Point with that. And I wanted to thank them for being out in Crown Point and doing their public hearing. I did not attend the Masenti one, but I do really appreciate the Crown Point. And we did get some good comments on that too. So I can have Council Kaigi. I need to keep learning that Bahre, Danny Bahre, listen. Dr. White, thank you. Also, the, I don't know if the other board members are doing that School Safe Training online, but I've done four out of six of those trainings. And I really appreciate giving us that training as board members. And there are some wonderful programs that are on there that I think is very meaningful for the board to continue to do. And just to mention, the sexual harassment, student issues and response, youth suicide awareness and prevention, discrimination awareness in the workplace, bloodborne pathogen exposure prevention, student drug and alcohol abuse, child abuse identifying and intervention. And I really, whoever sent us that email, just start taking those online. Thank you for that. I think it's something, like I said, that we need to know. I still got two more to do. Also, with the suicide prevention piece, that's what I work, that's what I do. Today was a very tough day for me. I helped my community by being on, involved with suicide crisis response. And even though I heard last week, the statistics of suicide has gone down 6% in the state of New Mexico, which is awesome. The awareness, prevention is getting out there. But it's still not completely, it's still a monster that we're tackling. The other thing that I did was I attended the parent meeting that was held at Thiru High School for the coaches. I'm very thankful for the principal at Thiru High. He listened to the parents, their concerns, but also was very professional to keep the personnel issues, not discussing personnel issues. So I'm very thankful for Mr. Center for that and his staff with the track team. And also thank you, Mr. Hyatt, for helping us with the transportation team there. I was invited to the Tohachi Padgett Contest, but I couldn't make it. And I just want to apologize to the parents and the community of Tohachi that I could not attend that. With Mr. Shaw, I attended the Del Marti Celebration and the groundbreaking. It's nice that we're, our district are getting new schools. Oh, Lincoln, I'm sorry. Yeah, Lincoln. And then the chapter meetings and a couple of football games. And I also want to say to Terry Fraser, I know she's not here this evening, but I just want to thank her for really helping me as a Region One president for getting the Region One meeting next month together. I know she's worked really hard on that. And she's been collaborating and communicating with me with that plan. So thank you, Terry.
At this time, I have nothing to report. Thank you, board members. We'll go ahead and move on. The notice of communication, do I need to read that or is it all right for people to read through? Okay. The notices and communications in there in the agenda for anybody to look at and read. Go into Section 6, Old Business. A O and May revision, approval to change location of the December 4th, 2017 to Thiru High and May 7th, 2018 to elementary, Rainbow Elementary School. And do I have a motion? Okay, Joan, can you do the roll call for us, please?
Mr. Mitchell?
Yes.
Ms. Manuelito?
Yes.
Mr. Shaw? Mr. Morrison?
No.
Go ahead, Ms. Vaughn.
This is something that I put on here. I doubt we're going to get the third vote because I know that he was already speaking against it at the last meeting. I'm just very disappointed that we are not meeting the needs of our parents. And I really would like this put on record. And I don't care if it's listened to in the recording, but I would like to really ask that, you know, we fight for our parents and we continue to advocate for our parents. And it's so disappointing that we cannot meet our parents with what they've requested from us as our constituents to go out to the schools and be in their presence. And you guys have been, I know you're new board members, but you guys have already been out to Navajo, you've been out to Thiru, you've been out here now to Twin Lakes, and you see parents here. You've had presentations, our students have done presentations for you all. And it's just so disappointing. I'm disappointed. And, you know, we, our children really expect us to be there and to partner with them also. And when we don't do that, you know, why are we really in the positions that we're in? It can't be for our convenience. And we've already heard from Mr. Hyatt, it's not the convenience of his staff because they're willing to go where we need them to go. And I, it just, I just wanted to mention that. And, you know, I tried, again, parents, I want you guys to know that this is something that I'm going to keep pushing for, I'm going to keep advocating for. Because this is what the parents and the students and administration wanted, for us to be out there. I know Thiru was planning on some good activities for you guys. And it's sad to see that you guys are not even willing to visit or be a part of the team of being at the schools. And this is not just a title that we wear. It's something that we should be doing to help our children and our parents and our communities. And I just wanted to say that.
I just also want to say that I am also disappointed at this point. You know, I think that we heard from one parent tonight that, you know, she was very grateful that we're here in her community and in her school where her kids go to school and where she has also attended school and gone through. You know, I mean, even if we don't get a large crowd, even to hear from one parent at any meeting is very, very important. And I'm thankful to hear from any parent that comes up. And like I said, we may not get a big crowd, but, you know, if we get that one parent who comes up and brings the concern to our attention, then, you know, that's something to me. And, you know, tonight, you know, I've heard several times where we're trying to rush this meeting. I mean, what are we rushing our meetings for? You know, we ran for this position to attend these meetings to represent our communities, our children, and our schools. We didn't want to just cut our meetings short and, you know, hurry, hurry. You know, that's not what we're here for. We need to remember what we're here for. And we need to get out and see our communities and our constituents, our teachers, our students. Thank you.
Thank you, guys. I appreciate your comment. I don't mind making a comment about, before we move on, making a comment about my vote. Gallup and our district headquarters is centrally located. And the vote that I took was, the vote that I made was in an effort to welcome more parents from more of our areas. When we a lot of times meet in some of the outlying areas, it could possibly alienate people from the opposite end of the district. And so it makes sense to be in an area that is centrally located to welcome as many parents from all over our district and as many people to come and make public comment as much as... from all over our district, um, and as many people to come and make public comment as, as much as possible. And I appreciate the feedback on, on trying to, you know, make the, the meeting move quickly, and, and I want you to know that it has nothing to do with making it go quickly and in a rush or anything. It's in the interest of, of an efficient meeting. There is a whole lot of stuff on the agenda, and so we're trying to go through it in an efficient manner. Bruce Morrison's been being a professional and I've been on for, you know, for hours about, about stuff. Let's go ahead and move on to our new business, um, number seven. And, and we have these A, B, C, uh, A, B, and C. If I could ask Mr. Hyatt, please, to maybe just explain each of these A, B, and C real fast, so we know exactly, uh, specifically what we're voting on.
Vice President Morrison, members of the board, uh, so I've had a few questions on this before the meeting, and so I'll reiterate what I said before for these particular items. And I'll also ask Miss Banks to also come up, and she may really give some more details regarding some amounts and things like that, if needed. And so basically, this section, as we have moved the control of the activity counts, at least our oversight of those activity counts, back to central office, we have noticed some related party, uh, payments in our, in our schools. And so what that means is, through the procurement process, we have to take those to the board, to acknowledge those. For example, if an employee is working in the schools at midnight, uh, for example, one of these, they DJ for the school. That has to be allowed by the school board to allow that to happen. Uh, and so we don't want to hurt people's opportunities, because sometimes, um, their businesses, their site activities do, um, go into the school system, such as a DJ, or we have several, let's mention, I think this is, um, officials, I think that's A. So we have several employees that are officials in the district, and so they are getting paid by the district as a salary, and then they come back and officiate. We need officials in the district, uh, to support our students. And so that's another related party that we want to make sure to be brought to, to the board, so Joan.
Mr. Hyatt, um, members of the board, members of the community, we always want to provide as much transparency as possible, which is the intent of the Governmental Conduct Act and procurement laws. However, we don't want to, in our communities, um, take out individuals who may be able to provide services that are fiscally advantageous to the district. And that's the circumstance that we're really talking about here. These individuals provide a service for various activities that the district is able to take advantage of on a competitive basis. Um, and we wouldn't want to exclude those individuals, um, from the market and being able to procure those services. Um, that is why this specific waiver is within this law, is because they know that there's going to be communities where there may not be much competition in certain areas. So cutting out individuals just because they are employees of the school district, understanding they have no, no part of the procurement process, um, would not be fiscally advantageous for the school district. But we do want to do it at a public meeting, so that it is, um, transparent, um, to our board and to our communities. Um, and as we see these issues arise with the changes that we've made, I suspect that you'll continue to see these. I, I would love to answer any questions any of you have.
Do we have any questions?
The question I have is, when I asked Mr. Hyatt about these for, also the same thing, for clarification, um, we're just not limiting, and I just want to be transparent with our audience here. Um, the individuals that are listed here, we're just not limited to them. Uh, like the photography one, it's listed under one person, but we're not just using that one person for photography or anything like that, right?
Ms. Manilito, members of the board, members of the community, that's accurate. We are just allowing them to be part of consideration when a school district, um, school site makes an individual choice. It's just we're acknowledging that they have a relationship to the district, um, because they are an employee at the district. Um, however, upon review, they do not have specific financial control over procurement decisions.
Um, I just want to say thank you for your transparency and finding these, um, what you did find and bringing it to the board for our acknowledgement and for us to know what is going on, and, you know, with, you know, I, I just thought that's communication. I think communication and transparency is getting so much better, and I do appreciate your work, and thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mitchell, and I, like I said, as, as we see any of these additional issues come up, we, we want to be fully transparent, they are all reviewed from the side of procurement to ensure that there is not a conflict of interest. And once that has been determined, these will be brought forward. Until then, we, we would not do business with these individuals.
The other question I had, um, from Mr. Hyatt was, would we be able to see how much more money that are not, how much more work they're making on top of them being Gallup, Tulane County staff employees, but also doing photography or DJing? Um, is that something that we can see and look at?
Ms. Manilito, um, I would not be able to, of course, disclose any of their other financial connections. However, anything, any business that they do is published, will be publicly disclosed in our audit. Um, and it is something that we openly disclose during our public audit, anytime we find a related party.
Yeah, I think, because I think that as long as, you know, we're, we, we're aware of all who these people are, and they put in their fair bid, and everything is clear, everything should be fine.
Are there any, is there anybody that would like to, uh, make a motion to, uh, to, uh, vote on these? Vote on these or approve these, and they need to be individually, A, B, and C?
I make a motion to adopt the resolution to run a waiver for district employees officiating athletic events.
Joan?
Mr. Mitchell?
Yes.
Ms. Manilito?
Yes.
Mr. Shaw?
Yes.
Mr. Mortensen?
Yes.
I motion, I motion to adopt the resolution to run the waiver for the district employee providing photography services, uh, participation in procurement of services.
Joan, roll call, please.
Mr. Mitchell?
Yes.
Ms. Manilito?
Yes.
Mr. Shaw?
Yes.
Mr. Mortensen?
Yes.
Do I have any motion?
I make a motion to adopt the resolution to run a waiver for district employees providing DJ services.
Roll call, please.
Mr. Mitchell?
Yes.
Ms. Manilito?
Yes.
Mr. Shaw?
Yes.
Mr. Mortensen?
Yes.
Thank you, Javon, I appreciate you. Uh, Mr. Hyatt, can you please also provide some, uh, explanation for item D, discussion on selecting a strategic session date, please?
Vice President Morrison, members of the board, I'm gonna give a date to you, and I'm hoping it fits all of your calendars. We're all crossing our fingers and crossing our legs, November third. No? Anything around, anything?
Second is good. I can read the opening of the application.
November sixth.
November seventh.
Oh, November. Yes, it is.
Wish my, that was my birthday wish for, uh, Mr. Mortensen today, so.
It was mine too, it's gonna be happy.
It'll be all day, and we'll give you more details about that. We may actually do a different location at central office. We will have her back, my son.
I make a motion to adjourn the meeting.
Wait, 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 wait.
So with the vote of, oh, gosh, I thought, with the vote of two in favor, two opposed on OMA, I would like to request it to be on the next board agenda, thank you. And also, a couple more things, sorry, Mr. Mortensen. Um, on the next agenda, I'd like to have the government, the Indian Education Government to government for board to attend, and also the New Mexico School Board Association Annual Conference for approval for board members to attend, thank you.
I'd like to look at both those to, uh, attend the. Um, do I have a motion to adjourn? We have a motion from Ms. Mitchell to adjourn, Joan?
Mr. Mitchell or Mr. Shaw?
Both of them, yeah.
Mr. Mitchell? Ms. Manilito?
Yes.
Mr. Shaw?
Yes.
Mr. Mortensen?
Yes.
Seven twenty-two.